We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge is to comply with the United States of America, the Republic of Louisiana, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for joining us this evening. Al, can we begin with roll call please?
Okay, and this is roll call for the City Commission Meeting of December 14th. Benson.
Benson here.
Benson is President Brunick.
Brunick here.
Brunick is President Sarda.
Sarda here.
Sarda is President Mybaum.
Mybaum is present.
Mybaum is present Minor.
Minor is present.
Minor is present Moser.
Moser here.
Moser is President Schram.
Schram here.
Schram is President Weber.
Weber is present.
Weber is present Mayor Johnson.
Johnson present.
Mayor Johnson is present City Manager Leon.
Lee On is here.
He manages the loan is present City Attorney Denherter.
Denherter is here.
The Attorney Denherter is present.
You have before you the minutes of the work session of November 23rd as well as the regular meeting minutes of November 23rd and the special City Commission meeting minutes of December 2nd. What is your pleasure?
Move to the minute.
Al, did you get your first and second?
Minor will second.
Alright, we have a first and a second. Any Commission discussion? Al, roll call please.
And this is roll call for the minutes Weber.
Weber votes aye.
Weber is aye Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye Minor.
Minor is aye.
Minor is aye Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye Schram.
Schram aye.
Schram is aye Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Johnson is aye Minutes pass nine zero.
You have before you the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Sarda moves to pay the bills.
Minor seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion about the bills? Al, roll call please.
And this is roll call on scheduled bills Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye Schram.
Schram aye.
Schram is aye Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye Schedule bills passes nine zero.
City Managers report.
Thank you Honorable Mayor, Members of the Commission. Just a few things to visit with you about this evening and most of them are positive things. So that's fun to be able to give you some good news. The first thing that I want to talk about though is a little bit of business. We're going to have another meeting in short order. I know folks are probably tired of meetings, right? But we have one more here at the end of the year. We scheduled that as you'll remember for Monday, which is a week from today, the 21st at noon. Relatively short agenda right now. We only have one item on the agenda that shouldn't create a lot of discussion. And we realize that some of you may or may not be able to be there, but I will have Colleen reach out to you independently to see if you'd be able to log into a go-to meeting. We will have a physical presence at our tech. But if you're able to jump on quick to take care of some business and that will wrap up our year. The next meeting after that will not be until January 11th. So we'll give you all a little bit of break and you can celebrate the holidays. So we'll be seeing some of you again next Monday. Some good news. Many of you know Rich DeWald. He is in our wastewater plant. Rich has worked for the city for 41 years. There's not very many things I've done for 30, 41 years in a row, but boy hats off to him for that. He recently received a state award, the JRID award. JRID was a long-term professional in water, wastewater in our state. And every year that group honors somebody who's spent really a lifetime in the profession. And so we're going to look to visit with the press about, media about maybe putting something forward to give Rich some accolades. Typically that's awarded at the conference and his colleagues can, you know congratulate them and etc. But because of COVID-19, there wasn't a conference this year. So we're going to give him a little bit of prompts. And if you see him, thank him for his many years of service and that honor because it really is an honor to be nominated for that. Also, many of you know Jake and Sandy Hoffner. And I just wanted to thank them publicly. They recently gave a donation to the dog park. Among their many other passions in Yankton, they are animal lovers. And I believe Sandy served or maybe still does serve on the Part Line Humane Society Board. And they've been involved with the four-legged citizens of Yankton every bit as much as they have the two-legged ones. And so they made a donation to our dog park. And with that donation, the Parks Department's able to put in some concrete pads and some benches for folks and their dogs to rest. So they're backless benches so dogs can easily rest on them, I guess. So we thank Jake and Sandy for that. If you see Jake and Sandy, let them know. We appreciate that. We have some other folks who are going to get some service awards as well this year. Typically we do these at our regular annual Christmas party. And we get to say a few words about folks and honor them. We're going to do that on a Zoom with our organization or a go-to meeting this year. So people will still get recognized. But I wanted to let you know the kind of service that we have in our organization. So in the 15-year category, we have Mary Robb from Public Works, Tom Curtinbach from the Fire Department, Colleen Bailey here in my office, and Monte Rothenberger in the Police Department. So those are all 15-year services to the City of Yankton. 20 years, we have one this year Dean Larson. He's Sergeant in our Police Department, as you know. 25 years, Michael Philmeyer in Public Works. And Brad Moser has been with us 25 years as well this year. So we have one that's a 35-year service award. That's Lori Lockwood in the Finance Department. So wow, by the time you start getting that 20, 25, 35 years of experience in the organization, I mean they're just invaluable to us. And so if you see any of those folks, thank them. I thank them all. We're so grateful that our human capital is the most precious capital we have. So we're so grateful to them and all that they do for the city. And we'll look forward to giving them a little bit of a bad time and then also recognizing them on our go-to meeting as part of our five days of Christmas that we're going through. So we also want to thank the City Commission for their generosity and hosting us a little bit differently than we typically are used to for the holidays. Today we had donuts. Tomorrow we're having a dress-up day, ugly sweater and everything else. So you may see some Facebook pictures with us not wearing our normal uniforms and normal attire. And we also have a lunch coming to be catered in. And you got us some gifts as well. So we appreciate that very much. And we are pleased that you are willing to do those things to recognize us and show your appreciation. I do not have sales tax numbers yet, but I hope to bring you more good holiday news in the next coming days on that. If there's not questions of me, Mayor, I will let you get to your business.
Amy, I would like to update the Commission about the news we heard today during the Yankton County COVID Task Force regarding the vaccine. If you're, and you're welcome to chime in with that too. So today we saw news that the vaccine has arrived in the state. It's gone to Avera and Monument Health. And then tomorrow Sanford will receive it. So the first people in the state did actually receive vaccines today. Yankton will not receive a vaccine, any vaccine dosages until next week. And those, in accordance with the state's plan, will go to frontline COVID healthcare workers first throughout our community. And then the next in line, I believe, is long-term care residents. And at this point, we don't know how many doses we'll get in that first shipment. We are expecting that we'll get weekly shipments at this point. But things change rapidly. Even from late last week to this week, there have been changes in the plan. So the vaccine coordinator, which is Liz Healy at a very secret hospital, is really just rolling with the punches as they come and trying to plan as best as she and the rest of the team can. Amy, did I miss anything?
Um, no. I think you're probably better, in a better position than I am to, to update folks. We do, we did talk a little bit today about that some of our emergency service personnel may be in one of the tiers for vaccine sooner than general population. But we'll prepare for that as we hear more news and we'll work with our healthcare providers on that. So it's a, stay tuned. And I think Avera and Emergency Management are going to be doing some public service, if I understood correctly today, announcements and other information to the public.
Any questions for the City Manager? Alright, if not, we'll move on to public appearances. This is a time when members of the audience can address the Commission about items not on tonight's agenda. We don't have anyone in the audience here tonight. Dave, is there anyone on YouTube?
There is no one on YouTube.
Okay. Thank you. In that case, we'll move on to the consent item agenda. Number one is Consideration of Memorandum 20-230 recommending approval of the renewal of mobile home park licenses for the 2021 licensing period. What is your pleasure?
So moved Moser.
Brunick second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? Dave, any comments on YouTube?
None regarding this item.
Thank you. Al, roll call please.
Okay, and this is roll call for consent item 2-1 Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye Schram.
Schram aye.
Schram is aye Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye Consent item 2-1 passes nine zero.
Number two under consent items is Consideration Memorandum 20-237 recommending approval of the application for pawnbroker's license at Cornerstone Jewelry Design LLC. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves.
Minor seconds.
We've got a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? Again, there's no one in the audience here. Dave, anyone on YouTube?
No comments about this item on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call please.
And this is roll call on consent item 2-2 Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye Schram.
Schram aye.
Schram is aye Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye Consent item 2-2 passes nine zero.
Moving on to old business. Number one is the City Commission acting as the Board of Adjustment. Will consider memorandum 20-236. So we'll be holding a public hearing at this time to consider a variance from the city's sign ordinance in a B2 Highway Business District for the placement of two banners in locations not permitted by the ordinance. And this is at 2320 Broadway Avenue. Unclaimed Freight Furniture is the occupant. What is your pleasure? Or would we like Dave to start us off with explaining this situation? Dave, why don't you proceed?
Sure. Our sign code fits in similar organizational structure or administration processes what our zoning ordinance does. So if we have a request for amendments or for variances, they go through Planning Commission and City Commission processes. When we see a request for a variance for, for a garage, say to be closer to the property line than it's supposed to be, it goes to the Planning Commission first for a review and recommendation and then goes to the City Commission sitting as the Board of Adjustment, as you are now, for final determination. What we have is a request for two banners as defined by our ordinance. These are, can best be described as whip banners or feather banners. When we rewrote the ordinance in 2013, there was a fairly extensive, extensive process where we went through visual preference surveys with the public, members of the Planning Commission, and the City Commission were a part of that. The business community was invited in. We had multiple public meetings, again with those visual preference surveys to see what types of things. Now busiest corridors as far as signage. And it was all about aesthetics and a look that may be a little neater and cleaner than a lot of communities see. And, and the result has been over time, when you drive down Broadway now as opposed to 10 years ago, you don't see streamers banners right out by the road on, you know, ag defense posts, or those air puppet guys dancing around the sidewalks or, or things like that. And that's all a decision that, that was made in, in 2013 by Planning Commission, City Commission, the community through, through a public input process. Those banners also, some of them are allowed if they're in specific locations. And, and at the time, we decided rather than having to issue permits for all of those things, let's just exempt them if they're placed in a, in an appropriate location. And what was defined in the ordinance and adopted as an appropriate location is either on or within two feet of the primary structure on, on, on the property. So anytime you have a location such as this, the primary structure is the main building sitting there that, that contains the business. That primary structure, when it was originally developed, has the ability to be anywhere from the front yard setback, which is 15 feet from the property line, back to wherever the building at will put, allow it to be on site. So we, we were, we're able to allow those without permits or consideration when we have times when we have non-conforming banners. We contact those folks and, and work through a compliance strategy. We have several of those pending at any given point in time. In this location, we had, we had a couple of contacts with this property manager. And the property manager then decided to go ahead and request a variance to the regulations to allow them to do what we had contacted them about, which was not permitted. Staff and the Planning Commission both, both recommend that, that the proposed variance request be denied. Variances by nature in our ordinance, to be granted, are by definition are supposed to approach confiscation of the use of property. And so South Dakota codified law to grant a variance, it should only be when a hardship that constitutes an unreasonable deprivation of the use of property is, is shown as opposed to the granting of a special privilege. And we could not as staff or as Planning Commission come to a conclusion of this being able to be defined as a hardship. So the recommendation would be to deny the request. And then the next question we always get is, you know, should we change the ordinance? Because maybe it wouldn't be so bad if, if there were a few of these. Well, staff's recommendation or the Planning Commission recommendation on that also would be, we have a pretty successful ordinance at this point in time. Let's let it continue to mature. It takes years for those sorts of ordinances to mature and, and have their desired impact. So our recommendation would be to not consider any discussion about a future ordinance amendment either. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any Commission questions?
Dave, this is Commissioner Minor. These feather banners tend to be 15 feet in height. Is that right? And then they blow in the wind?
I've seen them all different sizes. I've seen even six footers. And I've seen some that even maybe approached 20 feet in height. So there, there's multiple different sizes out there, but that's correct.
But the idea is the wind catches them, ripples them, and then waves whatever words to attract attention. Is that the idea?
I believe that's the strategy. And, and installation, I think, is one of the keys for why they're popular is because there's only one post in the ground. They don't need to put multiple posts in the ground and string ropes between them. They can just have one, one post in the ground to hold them.
Thank you.
Dave, this is Dave Sarda. Have we granted any requests since 2013 for our variance?
We have not, we have not granted a single variance to the sign ordinance since the redraft was adopted in 2013.
Thank you.
Any more Commission discussion? Or would anyone like to make a motion? Just to be clear, Dave, we, you would want a motion to deny the request rather than us just not taking any action, correct?
That would be most helpful. And it seems a little counterintuitive for a motion to deny, but that's, that would be most helpful and most clear as an indicator of the Commission's desire in this issue.
Sarda moves to deny the request.
Brunick second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further Commission discussion?
I just appreciate Commissioner Sarda bringing up that point about have we granted any variances since I've been on the Commission, which I don't remember how long that is now. The Commission has been very protective of that sign ordinance because I know so much work went into it in terms of community input, Commission input, staff input. And so the, my experience is that we've been very conservative in granting variances.
Any more Commission discussion? There's still no one in the audience here. Dave, is there any commentary on YouTube regarding this topic?
No comments about this item on YouTube.
Alright, thank you. Al, roll call please.
Okay, and this is roll call on old business item 3-1. And just to clarify for our audience, this is a motion to deny the variance. Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye Schram.
Schram aye.
Schram is aye Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye Motion to deny on old business item 3-1 passes nine zero.
Number two under old business is memorandum, or a memorandum supporting ordinance number 1043, the second supplement to the 2020 Annual Appropriation Ordinance number 1024. This is the second reading and a public hearing of the ordinance. What is your pleasure?
So moved Moser.
Sarda second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? There's no one in the audience here. Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the Commission on this item?
No YouTube comments on this item.
Thank you. Al, roll call please.
And this is roll call on old business item 3-2 Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye Schram.
Schram aye.
Schram is aye Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye Old Business Item 3-2 passes nine zero.
Moving on to new business. Number one is Consideration Memorandum 20-226 regarding an equipment purchase from Sourcewell Contract for a new street sweeper for the Department of Public Works. That price is $211,224. What is your pleasure?
Brunick so moved.
Benson second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? There's no one in the audience, so I'll go to Dave. Anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the Commission on this item?
No YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call please.
And this is roll call on new business item 4-1 Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye Schram.
Schram aye.
Schram is aye Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye New Business Item 4-1 passes nine zero.
Number two under new business is Consideration of Memorandum 20-228 recommending that the city write off uncollectible utility accounts in the amount of $980.73. What is your pleasure?
Schram so moved.
Weber second.
We have a motion and a second. Any Commission discussion on this item? We have no one in the audience. So Dave, is there anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the Commission on this item?
No YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call please.
This is roll call on new business item 4-2 Schram.
Schram aye.
Schram is aye Weber.
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye Benson.
Benson aye.
Benson is aye Brunick.
Brunick aye.
Brunick is aye Sarda.
Sarda aye.
Sarda is aye Mybaum.
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye Minor.
Minor aye.
Minor is aye Moser.
Moser aye.
Moser is aye Mayor Johnson.
Johnson aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye New Business Item 4-2 passes nine zero.
Number three under new business is Consideration of Memorandum 20-235 Resolution 20-88 regarding purchase of radar equipment for the Yankton Police Department. This would be three radars for the price of $8,685. But we've got a Highway Safety Project grant in the amount of $6,948 to go towards it. So it's only about $1,700 out of our accounts. What is your pleasure? What is your pleasure?
Benson, so moved.
Sarda second.
We've got a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this item? Still no one in the audience, so Dave, anyone on YouTube who wishes to address the commission on this item?
No YouTube comments on this item.
Thank you. Al, roll call please.
This is roll call on new business item four dash three. Weber?
Weber votes aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash three passes nine zero.
Number four under new business is a big one. It's consideration of memorandum twenty dash two twelve regarding final payment, change order seven and eight, and acceptance of the water purification plant project, which came in at thirty-four million, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars, and that was two point five five percent above the contracted price, which is pretty good on a project that size. What is your pleasure?
Benson, so moved. Minor, second.
We've got a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this item?
This question started, that project seems to be gone on forever, so good thing it's done. Congratulations to the city.
I'll just add that I think it's a real addition to that part of town, despite it being a water purification plant, it fits in well with the Meridian Bridge and the Riverside Park, and I think is been viewed as an asset to people, especially with the restrooms and the landscaping around there. So looking forward to that all coming together. I know there's some work to do on the landscaping yet.
Mayor, before the commission takes action, may I say just a couple things?
You may.
I know, I probably folks don't want to hear me talk about this, but I think the the levity of this needs to, needs to be known in the public. I mean, this project, and all of you have been involved in this project, it secures our future and it secures the future of people in the future of Yankton. It secures our ability to grow. This is an amazing project. I mean, not only is it beautiful and it fits in aesthetically and you guys did the right thing when it comes to that project, but this is the life-giving source that you invested in, and now it's going to allow our community to thrive. And so I know we're just going through some business here, but this is something to be celebrated and to be noted. It was a big risk. For those of you who are on the commission, when we went down this road, it wasn't always a smooth one, and there was a lot of discussion, but you know, the vision that you all had and the foresight you had to invest in Yankton, I think is going to pay dividends long after you and I are no longer here. So note that. And to Kyle and his staff to have the foresight to plan for more than what we actually need today, but plan for the future. We know that's always been, you know, something we've always tried to hold back on and just do the bare minimum, but you know, they, we were challenged to plan for what they could need in the future and plan for additional membranes, additional workspace, all those types of things. I think it was a huge success. You know, we talk a lot about quality of life. That is also a quality of life project, even though it's maybe not one that's as fun to talk about sometimes as a aquatic center or some of the other things we do, but it's huge. So I just wanted to give Kyle and his team the accolades they deserve, and we really had a great partner with HDR. They did an excellent job for us. That was very seamless, so we thank HDR for their work too, and we thank you guys as well. So I just want people to be as excited as I am about what we're doing down at that, at that plant.
Thank you, Amy, for providing a deeper perspective on that project. We've been in the midst of it for a long time, so it is a very significant evening to come to the close, but have something that will serve us for decades to come. With that, is there any more commission discussion? There's no one in the audience still, so Dave, is there anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission on this item?
No YouTube comments on this item.
Al, roll call please.
And this is roll call on four dash four, new business item four dash four. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash four passes nine zero.
Number five under new business is consideration of memorandum twenty dash two three eight regarding resolution twenty dash ninety, a replat of the thirty-one hundred block of Broadway Avenue. Lubin Properties LLC is the owner. What is your pleasure?
Sarda moves to approve.
Brunick, second.
Got a motion and a second, any commission discussion on this item? Dave, would anyone on YouTube like to address the commission on this item?
There are no comments on YouTube.
Al, roll call please.
This is roll call on new business item four dash five. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. My bomb?
My bomb is aye.
My bomb is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Shram?
Shram, aye.
Shram is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash five passes nine zero.
Number six under new business is introduction of the 2020 assessment role for noxious vegetation and tree trimming, consideration of memorandum twenty dash two three two and resolution twenty dash eighty-seven recommending that January twenty-fifth, 2021 be established as the date for a public hearing on the special assessment role for noxious vegetation and tree trimming. Can I get an introduction?
Introduced, Moser.
Thank you. Any further commission discussion on that item before we move on? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to number seven under new business, which is consideration of memorandum twenty dash two thirteen regarding the scope and contract for engineering services for the wastewater plant. I guess if we thought we weren't going to have to hear from Kyle anymore after the water purification plant project, we're reminded that Kyle is still working on a lot of things for us, and very important things for the future. Amy or or Kyle, I don't know who wants to talk about what this project would encompass.
Well, I'll just talk a little bit, and then when I get above my pay grade and technical ability, I'll stop talking and Kyle will know that it's time for him to jump in, but I think there's a couple things going on here with our wastewater treatment facility. So number one, we were in need of some repair prior to what happened in 2019, prior to our flooding. The wastewater plant is not like the water plant in that the wastewater plant runs all of the time. It runs consistently throughout the day. There's course times of higher flow, but it runs all the time. So it's, it's used a lot harder than the water plant is. And you know, water plant, we have some peaks in the summer months for watering and things like that, but the way that the water is, you know, goes through the whole cycle, the wastewater never changes and it's, it's constant. So we have that issue. We also have the issue of all the damage that was done during, during the flooding. So we can talk about what our staff went through those evenings following the flood and in those days, but there was a lot of damage and we know we have to build in some resiliency to what we have now. The other part of that conversation is, we know we need to do some immediate upgrades to buy us enough time to determine where do we, where do we go in the future? And the way we do that is with a facilities plan. And so there's two parts to this discussion tonight. One, moving forward with a, an engineering contract to upgrade the current facilities and repair the current facilities, and then the engineering contract to help us with our facilities plan. Now, I believe that when we think about timeframe, I, I do like to use the water treatment plant. I think the facilities plan was done, Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, in maybe 2010 or It was before I came on board, so I think it was twenty, between 2010 and 2012. It took that long before the project was developed and determined.
Yeah, I think it was actually even earlier than that, it was before I was on, on staff also, so.
And we know that's been sixteen, that we know that's been sixteen years. So it took some time before the community got to the point of deciding where it wants to go. So I don't want folks to think that this is the time where we need to start talking about, you know, what happens at the wastewater treatment plant in the long-term future. We will talk about that. I don't think it'll be this commission deciding that, is what I want to communicate. We'll talk about it in generalities, but it's, we've got quite a bit of time before we're going to be making that decision. So there's some important decisions along the way that we'll be working with you to, to make or to think about that will help a future commission make that decision, but unless you all stay on for many, many years, I don't know that this commission will be the one deciding, you know, when we talk about that question of location that came up next year, or, 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 you know, are we rebuilding? Are we, are we upgrading? Are we relocating and rebuilding? And part of that will, will determine, be determined on how you decide to treat the wastewater at said new plant. And I say you in a general term, because it may be you and it may be future people. So I want to talk, I wanted to talk about those things, that there's two discussions here, an upgrade with the EDA funds and then a long-term facilities plan. The other thing that I want to do is talk about HDR a little bit. Again, from my perspective, and, and I'm sure Kyle has a perspective too, they're wonderful, best in the business. I happen to have a long history with one of the individuals that will be a, a main player in this project, Delron Peters, he's on our go-to tonight. He worked with me on a project in, in Canton, a major project, and if, if some, if an engineer can get me to understand something that's technical as a sewer lagoon plant or a wastewater plant, I know they're really good, but he's fantastic, very well respected, not just in our area, but across the country, and he's, he's who we want on this. So, you know, we really been too impressed with their work on, I have been impressed with their work on the, on the water treatment plant, and I really think that they can do a great job for us into the future. So with that, I will stop and let Kyle describe a little bit more the details of the project that we're asking you to approve, as well as let HDR and Kyle visit with you about the facilities plan.
Mayor Johnson, I'm just a little bit about the project. It's approximately eleven separate projects, what leads to a little bit of a, some extra work involved when you look at eleven projects, seven or eight different buildings, three or four different sites within the, the collection system. So that's part of that EDA project that we were very fortunate to be funded at the level we were funded. So on the construction side, about six, a little less than six and a half million dollars, the project is paid through, for, through EDA funds. As we get into this for the engineering, for that twenty percent match, we'll be applying for SRF funds, for those matching funds. Again, it's a retrofit to the facility, adds another level of, of engineering involved in terms of, of, you know, a lot of things that may come up through the project that we didn't see coming. Again, we still have all those other aspects with process engineering, when we talked about Delron being involved in that. We also have structural engineers involved, mechanical, civil, a big portion of it's going to be electrical, there's a lot of upgrades to electrical. And then through all this, we have to maintain operation of the facility, like Amy said. With wastewater, we can't shut it down to work on it, so we have to do a lot of bypass pumping and things like during the project. So it'll be a very complicated project. Then as we get in the master plan, the master plan is really going to hit on where those future regulations going to lead us to. Do we have an aging infrastructure problem, which we know we have, and also looking at that capacity of our facility into the future. We will do just a little bit of really preliminary work on what it would look like if we had to move the facility or if we chose to move the facility. So there'll be a little bit of work on that, but not a lot. This is really that first step in seeing and starting to gain a direction of where we want to go. That's about all I have. Is there any questions?
Commission, any questions for Kyle or Amy?
Commissioners, we also have HDR representatives here with us on our go-to in case you would have questions for them about their proposal.
Hearing nothing, so the, the motion that we're seeking would be to enter an agreement with HDR for a not-to-exceed amount of one million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars. That, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
I know it might be a little confusing, because we do have these two different issues we're talking about within this discussion. If there's no more discussion, does anyone want to make that motion?
Shram, so moved.
Benson, second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, any further commission discussion? There's no one in the audience here. Dave, anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission on this item?
There are no YouTube comments.
One thing, and you probably mentioned the same, Amy, but this would be paid through state revolving fund loans, this one point eight million dollars?
Yes, we are on the SRF, state revolving loan, state water plan, state wastewater plan for this project, so it would be correct. Now, that's a loan, so you know, all that's have to be paid, Al would like to say, tell us, so you know, there, there will be impacts over time on rates for these improvements. And just like we went through with the water treatment plant, we'll have to, you know, we'll have to visit about that, either you or future commissions. That's how we pay back, you know, the wastewater, wastewater fund is through rates and through service, through, for the service, so that should not, you know, be left out, that we are going to have to, you know, pay that money back. Kyle, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I would also add that, looking at the SRF loan right now, we're looking at a twenty-year loan at a two percent interest rate, so the rates right now for borrowing through, through the SRF is really good at this time, so that is a positive at least.
It, it is, and also same as water treatment plant, other communities are aging as well, and their infrastructure is aging at the same rate ours is, and so we're smart to go forward with this when we can, as we can. But you know, there, when, when I say impact- But, you know, when I say impact rates, that means we'll have to adjust the rates and that means raise rates for citizens to accommodate these and other projects. And you've seen that over the last couple budget years to prepare for this. But, you know, I have to be fair that there'll be more adjustments to, you know, in the future for whatever it is that this master plan guides us towards.
All right, if there's no more discussion. Al, roll call, please.
Okay, and this is roll call on new business item four dash seven. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash seven passes nine zero.
Number eight under new business is consideration of memorandum twenty dash two-eleven and resolution twenty dash eighty regarding the library contract between the City of Yankton and Yankton County. Yankton County is contributing the same amount as last year, which is fifteen thousand dollars. What is your pleasure?
Weber moves the memorandum.
Minor, seconds.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Dave, is there anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission on this item?
There are no YouTube comments on the site.
Al, roll call, please.
And this is roll call on new business item four dash eight. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash eight passes nine zero.
Number nine under new business is consideration of memorandum twenty dash one ninety-seven regarding change order number one, final project acceptance and final payment for the Riverside Drive reconstruction project from Green Street to Broadway. The final amount is eight hundred ten thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars. What is your pleasure?
Minor moves memorandum.
Brunick, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, would anyone on YouTube like to address the commission on this item?
No comments on YouTube.
Al, roll call, please.
And bless you, Amy. This is roll call on new business item four dash nine. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. And for the viewing audience, Amy sneezed, I wasn't blessing this large expenditure on Riverside Drive, so.
Thank you for that clarification, Al. Number ten under new business is consideration of memorandum twenty dash two-three-nine regarding resolution twenty dash ninety-one, which is a plat of the east side of the twenty-five-hundred block of Dorian Drive. Johansson Contracting, Inc. is the owner. What is your pleasure?
So moved, Moser.
Schramm, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any commission discussion on this item? Dave, anyone on YouTube who would like to address the commission on this item?
No comments on YouTube.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item four dash ten. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash ten passes nine zero.
Number eleven under new business is resolution twenty dash eighty-nine regarding surplus handheld or regarding surplus handheld equipment from the Water Department. Amy, there wasn't a memo on this. Can you describe for the commission what we're surplusing here?
Sure. So the Water Department in the past has used some handheld equipment. And I believe, was this Kyle for reading meters with the SCADA system?
That is correct. It was for reading the water meters. We've gone to, these aren't supported anymore. So we've moved on to using basically a laptop for reading meters.
So we don't need these devices anymore. And we already did our surplus, but Kyle didn't get those on the list. So I don't know if he's on the naughty list or what's going on. But he, so we knew we had a commission meeting coming up and we want to surplus them. So this is more or less housekeeping. It should have been on maybe our regular surplus. So we let him put it in there, but we didn't get a memo just with everything going on last week. So nothing really, not a big deal here.
Does anyone want to make a motion on this item?
Brunick, so moved.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any further commission discussion? Dave, would anyone on YouTube like to address the commission on this item?
There are no YouTube comments.
Thank you. Al, roll call, please.
This is roll call on new business item four dash eleven. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. New business item four dash eleven passes nine zero.
There is no other business on tonight's agenda, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Benson, so moved.
Minor, second.
Got a motion and a second. Al, roll call, please.
You ought to see if there's any comments. This is a roll call on the motion to adjourn the meeting. Weber?
Weber is aye.
Weber is aye. Benson?
Benson, aye.
Benson is aye. Brunick?
Brunick, aye.
Brunick is aye. Sarda?
Sarda, aye.
Sarda is aye. Mybaum?
Mybaum is aye.
Mybaum is aye. Minor?
Minor, aye.
Minor is aye. Moser?
Moser, aye.
Moser is aye. Schramm?
Schramm, aye.
Schramm is aye. Mayor Johnson?
Johnson, aye.
Mayor Johnson is aye. Motion to adjourn passes nine zero.
This meeting is adjourned. Be well, everyone.